Good morning. It is now nine o'clock and I ask that you would please stand for the invocation to be given to us this morning by Chaplain Ralph Eastwood with the Henry County Police Department as one of our chaplains and please remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Chairman Wood, once again thank you for having prayer to open our meetings. I don't take this lightly, but I take it seriously. If there's ever been a time that we need to easy, even as Christ said in the garden of Gethsemane, "Not my will, but thine be done," that could be our motto and our purpose in all our business today, is the will of the Lord being done in the decisions that we make. May we pray. Heavenly Father, thank you for the privilege of prayer. Thank you, Jesus, for the purpose of prayer that draws us closer to you. And thank you, Lord, for the power of prayer, because, Lord, you said that you'll be here together and be with us in decisions that we make, Lord. And well, we also pray for the family of that officer that gave his life this week, Lord, that's helping to protect us in this state and just bless that family in a special way. And, Lord, the decisions that'll be made today, may we all come with a, with a heart of love and a heart of cooperation, Lord, and realize that you have a purpose in all things that goes on in this county. And, Lord, the things that we do and the decisions we make, we pray that it glorifies you and exalts your purpose that you have for this county as we go forward, to reach people, Lord, for Christ and to reach people, Lord, for the betterment of the lives that they're to live in this county, for the safety that they're to have and all the things that they need as taxpayers in this county, Lord. And we just seek your divine will in all the decisions that we make. So, Lord, everything that we say and do today, may it be done in love, cooperation, with a mind that's open to being spoken to by the leadership of the Holy Spirit. And, Lord, thank you for the privilege of leading in prayer today. And thank you, Lord, as we'll pledge our flag. And, Heavenly Father, thank you for our country. And thank you for what it represents. And thank you for the laws in our country and all the, all the rules in our country that have been to make a better place to live. So, Lord, this is your day. You say in your word, Lord, this is your day that you've created and we have to rejoice and be glad in it, Lord. And may we just appreciate this life that we have, a life that is purposeful and can make a change in other lives as we're led by your Holy Spirit. So, Lord, just take charge in all that's said and done today. And we just ask this in your name, the name of the line of the tribe of Judah, of one that paid the price on Calvary's cross, died and rose again, and is seated at the right hand of the Father in the seating for us today, in your sweet and loving and saving name. In Jesus' name, we pray today and all God's people said.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of America, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Amen. Thank you. So, at this time, we are now calling this meeting of the Board of Commissioners to order. And at this time, we'll identify if there are any changes or revisions to the agenda.
I have one.
Okay, there is a motion to make a change.
Yeah, I would like to make a motion to amend the agenda regarding the discussion of the SPOS 5 action that we have here for discussion and make this a resolution where we can take action, asking the cities, to give the cities ten-day notice to deliver us with a list of approved projects. And also that if we don't get the list, that we will go ahead and take action on the 75-25 split to move forward with an approved list. So, so basically, if we can have discussion about it, if you don't understand what I'm asking for.
Okay. Okay, so that from, if I understand correctly, you're requesting a motion to change the SPOS discussion, SPOS 5 discussion from a discussion to a resolution with a resolution to propose a 75-25 split.
75-25 split and to ask the cities for a list within 10 days. If we don't get the list within 10 days, then we will move forward without the cities so that we can get the ball rolling with our SPOS list.
Okay. So, we've heard that motion. Is there a second?
Second.
There's a second. Any further discussion or comments from the board regarding that motion to amend the agenda? Okay. All in favor to amend the agenda for that motion, say, raise a high? Any opposed? One. Okay, so five in motion in favor of amending the agenda to change that SPOS 5 item to a resolution 75-25 split, requesting lists from the cities within 10 days. And if no list from the cities, that we will move forward with the 75-25 split. Okay? All right. So, we, or any other changes to the agenda? Okay. Hearing none, the floor is now open for a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
Move to approve.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Okay, five to one. All right. So, at this time now, we'll move into the recognition of our Henry County employee retirements. And we welcome up Mr. Brad Johnson for that presentation. And then afterwards, we'll ask the board to come down for pictures.
Good morning, Madam Chair, Commissioners. I have one of the best spots on the agenda and that's recognition of employees. Our number one asset in our, in our, in our county and our government is our employees. And we have the chance that they've done work for Henry County, done work for their community in the way they care, and to celebrate their retirement as they move to the next chapter of life is very monumental to me. Today, we have three, or this month, we have three retirees. And I'll start with Ms. Darlene Hildebrand. If she could come up. Darlene, come on up. Like and present Ms. Darlene with her certificate and for her recognition of 12 years of service in our Superior Court system. And her, her asset or her giving to that department made it successful every day. So, we want to thank her for that and thank her for her dedicated service for Henry County. And once we do all three, we'll have, have them come up at that time. The second one is Major Jack Oakman. And Major Oakman, he has 13 years of service with the Sheriff's Department. He had many years of service to Henry County. And I asked Mr. Major, keep calling him Mistress, Major Oakman to come up. And I got a few things that were sent in from, about Major Oakman that we might not know. I didn't know. And I've worked with Major for a long time. And Major started off in 1974 to 1982 as a firefighter. So, he did, he did well and passed that test, got that firefighter certification. Also, all the way up to Fire Chief for the city of Stockbridge during that time. He began his career in law enforcement in 1974 until today. Started off at the Volunteer Reserve Peace Officer. He also served on the Board of Assessors for Henry County from 1989 to 2006, where he gave that position up to go full-time for Sheriff Chafin with the Sheriff's Department at that time. But he moved up through the ranks in the Sheriff's Department to his current position as Major. And we want to thank Major Oakman for his dedicated service to the citizens of Henry County. And we'll get a phone call in just a second. All right. Now to our longest-serving employee of Henry County, maybe history. Mr. Clifford Sims, he's a General Foreman for our DOT. Clifford, he basically is a glute who kept everything together for a long time. He's seen many changes in Henry County. He's seen, as the longest tenure employee, seen more changes than anybody. But 40 years of service to Henry County is very unprecedented and want to thank you for your service. Thank you for his dedication to the community and to the public he served for them 40 years. Clifford, come on up. And for his 40 years of service, it says, Mr. Clifford Sims, 40 years of dedicated service to the Board of Commissioners of Henry County. We congratulate you on your retirement. Job well done. This time, Commissioner, we get our pictures with the retirees to come up.
Well, we definitely congratulate all of our retirees and wish them the very best in their retirements as well. And so, again, thank you. And thank you again, Mr. Sims, again, for your 40 years of service. And Major Oakman for your 13 years. And Ms. Hildebrand for your 12 years. Again, it's very much appreciated. So, at this time, we're now moving to our next agenda item. And this is regarding our financial update from our Director of Financial Services, Mr. David Smith.
Good morning, Madam Chair, Mr. Vice Chair, Commissioners, and the Henry County community. This presentation covers the financial report and a SPOS report. 11 months of our fiscal year is going to be presented. Wanted to let you know that we've now collected 95% of our revenues and expended 81% of the budget. Our expenditures should actually be at 92%. So, we're 9% down primarily because of vacancies. Revenue collections of property taxes are 5.9 million better than what we planned. The next slide is our financial report. I've highlighted a couple of numbers here. One is showing the property tax increase at 7% greater than planned and the $6.1 million showing the expenditures greater than revenue for the month. If we continue to spend at the budgeted rate, our $24 million difference is going to be paid out of cash balance. We continue to pay using our cash balance for expenditures as revenue collections are trending down. The next item is the graphical representation of our year-to-date actuals against the budget. The next year, the next slide is our year-over-year for the month of May comparison, where it's showing that for the month of May last year, this time, we were trending a lot better. This slide is the graphical representation of our month-over-month in the prior year. So, let's take a look at fund balance and what that means. We began our audit at year at 71 million of revenues minus expenditures. We are currently at the 24 million income. We estimate fund balance at the end of the year to be 95 million. We have a 25% restriction on that amount of 41 million for our expenditures. Hopefully, we'll end, so currently at fund balance at May is $54 million. Let's take a look at SPOS collections. And as we look at SPOS collections, let's also take, which shows that we're trending better, let's take a look at our expenditures, where from the prior month, we've increased our expenditures 480,000. We continue to trend better than budget in our SPOS revenue collections and trend worse in our expenditures because we aren't spending at the same rate. This concludes the financial report of my presentation. This is the graphical representation, which is the conclusion of my financial report. Are there any questions?
Okay, are there any questions from the board? Hearing none, hearing none. And thank you for sending us that report as well, Mr. Smith.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, our next update will be by Mr. Skip Floyd, our Director of Technology Services, regarding a Tyler system update.
Good morning, Chair, Board members.
Good morning.
Wanted to give you a quick update on the Tyler project, the ERP and the public safety update. Of course, this includes the financial, human resources, payroll, intergov, and public safety portion of this. Here is a list of all the modules for the financial that we've already deployed and is running right now, except the two of the asterisks, cashiering and budget, and I'll get to those in just a second. Financial modules were implemented in February of 2019. They are going very well right now. Finance, budget, and purchasing have worked very hard implementing the modules. And so far, so good, running very smoothly for several months. The two outstanding items we have with the financials right now is cashiering. The, one of the problems was equipment. We had a new requirement on a security update for some of the card swipes to be encrypted at a higher rate. So, we had to send some hardware back and get new hardware returned. And we're just getting that in. So, that should be implementing pretty, pretty quickly. Finance is actually handling that part of it right now and doing very well with that extra bit of workload for them, but they're doing very well with that. Budget, we just went live in the last few days, working very closely with those guys to make sure we don't have any incidences or any issues that may pop up. And the work ordered inventory module is basically fleet services. And that project will start in early fall. And it is on schedule. The human resources and payroll, our original go-live date was July 1st, 2019. We had to push that off. And you can't push it off for a couple of weeks. It's quarterly because we do IRS reporting every quarter and you can't mix the system. So, we had to push it off to at least October 1st, 2019. And we've published a calendar for dates and milestones with Tyler and HR and all of my staff. And we're working very hard to make sure we meet that date coming up. Intergov, which is permitting and planning, business license, code enforcement, and fire inspection. This project is exceeding at a very good pace. It'll be another several months before we go live with all that. Code enforcement, building department have worked very hard in embracing this software and has worked very closely with us and Tyler to get this implemented. The fire inspection module, as part of permitting and planning, is the only one of these modules that's running slightly behind, but we're working to get that caught back up. All other modules are on track to go live in early 2020. Public safety, that includes CAD for 911, fire and police records, mobile CAD correction, and e-ticket. Public safety went live with CAD, mobile CAD, and police and fire records on June the 25th, 2019. What a, what a fun day that was. It was, it was not without issues, but we, we survived and we, we made it through. We still have some items, but that's a huge complicated piece of software. And it has went surprisingly well, in my opinion, so far. We had some issues with addresses not coming up in CAD. And we had a lot of departments jump on this and fix it pretty quickly, especially downstairs with, with the mapping and everything that was going on. We had some issues, but we've got them fixed. So far, so good. Fire records, police records are on, are working right now. We're still training on some of the LERMs part of it. Mobile CAD is in the cards and, and the computers are in. All the laptops we ordered are in and being deployed to the fire and police department right now. Corrections, the sheriff made a determination that he wanted to postpone until October of 2019 so they could run parallel with their current system and the new system, make sure that we don't miss anything. And that's his prerogative, what he wants to do. E-tickets, that's the New World Brazos e-citation project was started last month, end of last month, and is going very smoothly. The project team from the police department, Tyler, proceeding through the analysis, configuration, testing steps. And it should only take a few months to complete. This is not an extremely complicated piece of software here. I, any, any questions anybody has, I'll be glad to answer.
All right. Thank you for that presentation. Any questions from the board? And I have some comments as well. Commissioner Thomas?
Some of the questions I have because I was not here when you started, okay?
Yes, ma'am.
So, when did this Tyler project start? When did it actually start?
That would have been, when did we sign the resolution? October last year? I believe it was October last year.
So, 2018?
Yes, ma'am.
And what's your completion date projected to be?
The projection was a two-year project.
Two years. Okay.
And that was both public safety and finance, ERP.
You kind of went past, I'm not sure, but what services would Tyler render for the HR department?
The services, that would be payroll and HR, employee benefits. And that, that kind of software is what we're installing, is what we're going to be pushing out. You mean what are, is Tyler providing training-wise?
What modules are we using for HR and Tyler?
That would be the HR and the payroll module would be for, for that. That's what we had to push off until October.
October this year?
Yes, ma'am.
Will it also be using some type of uniform way for all departments to clock in and out?
Yes, ma'am. It's possible, if that's what anybody wants to use, there is a timekeeping module if they want to use it.
I think that really should be more what we decide we want to use because at this point in time, we have departments using all types of system, from paper to electronics to nothing.
I'd love to get rid of paper. It's
I mean, it's ridiculous.
Yes, ma'am.
So, we need to know what Tyler can offer to us that we can look at as a module so that all departments can use the same systems for checking in, or clocking in and clocking out.
Yes, ma'am.
One of the biggest overhead any company has of any administration is HR. So, that would be very concerning to me. And I'd like to know if that's going, if that's possible to be biometric and not coded, some type of biometric system to match that.
You mean a thumbprint or something like that?
Absolutely.
I would definitely check in on that for you.
Please let us know about that.
Yes, ma'am.
The other thing I wanted to know, you went through something, again, and went kind of fast for me because I'm new to it, about fleet management. What type of fleet management will you have with this system?
This is, I have, to be honest, I have not seen the work order and inventory system for fleet management because we haven't started that one yet. But it's supposed to manage better than what they're dealing with on AS400 now. I can get some information on that project, that particular module.
We'd like to know what type of fleet management that Tyler, I would like to know, will be in the system. And separate from, when I say fleet management, it would not be just for police. I'm talking about more of the county vehicles that we use independently outside of the police force, outside of our fire force. But we have another set of fleet vehicles that we need to manage to know where they are, how they're operating. Mr. Brad, go ahead. I hear you ready to jump in on that.
Yes, ma'am. The fleet module we have is, is for the invoicing, is for our parts, is for that maintaining that part. On a separate thing, I'll speak to a little more on our list of questions from the board to the address today. We are looking at fleet module that does GPS checking, it does GPS basically routing, accountability where vehicles are at all times, that can be managed through our, through our fleet department. But it is not part of a Tyler project. But we are looking as, as a sub-module, as you and I discussed a few weeks ago, what options do we have? Can we use existing cell phones we have now that can track instead of, instead of the, instead of cost for, for GPS tracking? But we're looking at every option to get a recommendation back to the board.
We definitely need to look at that because I really don't want to receive many more text messages saying, hey, we saw your guys and trucks over here.
Sure.
And this is what they were doing. Okay?
Yes, ma'am.
We need to make sure that we're managing our fleet. If they're deployed to a certain area, know that they're going to that area, coming back when they're finished, and so that we can manage our costs for fuel and operations as well. So, if that's not going to be a part of Tyler, I'd be interested to know what type of management system you're bringing before us and what will that system do as far as reports?
Exactly. We'll have our fleet manager look into everything. We'll definitely work with you and the board. And it will come from the board for, for approval and direction.
I heard you say a couple of times that Tyler was pushed out by certain departments. Or you're still bringing on certain, are there any costs involved every time we push these different modules out to the county?
It, it really depends. The push out on the HR, it will not be an additional cost because we basically froze the consulting time and set it in place and moved it out. And again, the only reason we're pushing it out that far is because of the quarterly reporting. You can't report to the IRS on it, on this system and then split it and report again. So, you have to push it out for that long. And it is, it's, it's an extremely complicated module, the finance and payroll and HR, because you're dealing with, with, you know, deductions and people's pay. And so, it is an extremely complicated one. And HR and we're
You've got to remember, there are a lot of modules out there from ADT on that are complicated would do the same thing that you're telling me Tyler can do.
Yes, ma'am.
And do it very, very sufficiently and put out reports very accurately that anybody can look and determine what's happening in our county. But I'm concerned that we don't have a system that we can use right now to monitor that. And therefore, we're at the mercy a lot of times of our employees as to when, where they are, when they are, and how they are operating.
Yes, ma'am.
So, I'm looking forward to the system helping us manage that and there again, manage our overhead because there are some employees that we're looking forward to having other monies available to add benefits to them as well.
Correct.
Okay?
Yes, ma'am.
The other thing I'd like to know in this whole process of using Tyler, is there anything there that would be available to the BOC if they want to look at reports, to look at a particular area, if they want to look at operations, if they want to look at fuel costs, if they want to look at mobile cell costs? Would that system be available to us at a certain level?
There would definitely be reporting available in there for any, anything you'd want to look at. It's, we can build ad hoc reports, we can build them on a fly, we can do, and there's, of course, canned reports inside the financial systems that allow you to pull up what you would like to see at the time.
So, there can be a level there built into it for the BOC if they decide they want to look at a different particular report by department is available to us? I mean, I don't want to call you every time I want to know something. That's my question.
Commissioner, what we have in vision is that, that open transparency with our reporting system. This time, I couldn't pull an AS400 report if I had to. I had to always get somebody. That reported with Tyler will be available. We also have the capacity of providing you monthly reports of everything you would like, including the detailed report of operational successes and issues on a monthly basis. We have that. Part of this plan implementation moving forward is to provide you guys with additional reporting every month that would be accessible. Right now, we do it on paper. And it's just going through, you know, it's, it's just, it's just crazy to be in 2019. So, we do have a vision of providing you guys monthly more. Anything you would like will be very attainable in our new system.
Well, thank you. And I am so glad to see us move into an innovative system.
Yes, ma'am.
Because as you stated, to be in 2019 and operating at certain levels that we are, there's no excuse for it. Now, my next question would be, since we're embracing Tyler, what are we going to do about updates? If it takes us two years to install their program, I'm quite sure within the two-year period, they've had updates. Are those updates going to cost us as a county? Is there a contract to do automatic updates? How are we operating that?
We're, we're on a yearly contract with Tyler. We get automatic updates, training, we get Tyler We get Tyler Universities, so we can go in and watch videos. We have staff that can train new employees that come in. So all of that's built into the maintenance agreement that we pay every year.
Okay.
It's part of the initial contract.
Part of the contract.
Thank you, guys. Thank you so much for that update.
Yes, ma'am.
All right. Any other questions? And I've got a couple of comments. Okay. Well, first of all, this is a major conversion, and so I'm just thankful to this board, thankful to the staff that has recommended that we move forward, because it does bring our systems up to the 21st century.
Yes, ma'am.
So I want to commend you on that. I want to thank the employees who are having to go through these adjustments, because there's a lot of training that's been involved in all of this. And so again, just glad that we're working through some things. And yes, Commissioner Thomas, this will bring us into some of the strategic reporting and management reporting that has been lacking. I mean, the, having to operate from an old outdated system, working through papers and Excel spreadsheets, but more importantly, the system brings a lot of the department's communications together to talk together as well. So again, just want to say thank you for what you're all doing. I know we've got much work to do through all of that. It may be good if Commissioner Thomas gets a copy of that resolution and all of the things-
Sure.
-that this board had discussed and approved on. So that would be a good thing for her to see as well.
Fantastic.
All right. Any other questions or comments from the board? Commissioner Barn?
I certainly appreciate your comments. I think it's about accountability and, and just make people be accountable what they're doing. And, and I like what you had to say, and I appreciate that. One other thing I'd like to see us look at is, is we got so many of our county vehicles that don't have the county logo on them, and I think each one ought to have a county logo on them. Even the county managers' call will have it on there. I just want to make that comment.
Any other questions or comments from the board? Okay. Well, we thank you for that update and look forward to another one soon.
Thank you so much.
All right. Thank you. Okay. Well, now moving to our next item, which is an appointment that has been submitted to the hospital authority. And again, there's been three applicants that have been submitted, and this will be a bitted seat that, that has been expired. And so the submittals will, are Cord Leverett III, Dr. Rochelle Lowry, and Jonathan Feld Crowe. And again, these are recommendations that will be submitted to the hospital authority. And so at this time, do we have to request an approval for this? Yes, okay. So we've got those recommendations. I think most of them came from District Two, because it was a District Two position that is expired. So at this time, we open the floor for a motion for this middle of the three names that were just read to you.
Move to approve.
We have a motion?
A second.
And a second. Any discussion or comments? All in favor. Okay, it passes unanimously. So those names will be submitted. So at this time, we'll move now into the consent agenda, and these are items that are, will be considered unless the board wants to remove them from the consent agenda to discuss further. The first one is from the Department of Transportation, which is a resolution approving speed humps on Meadowbrook Drive. The second resolution, again, is coming from the Department of Transportation. It's a resolution approving speed humps on Cleveland Drive. The next consent agenda item is coming from Juvenile Court, which is a resolution accepting grant award in the amount of $295,086, $295,864 from the Criminal Justice Coordinator and Council to fund evidence-based programs during FY '20. So those are our consent agenda items for today. Is there any desire to have any of these removed for further discussion? Seeing none, hearing none, this ends the consent agenda. The floor is now open for a motion to approve the consent agenda items.
Move to approve.
We have a motion?
A second.
And a second. Any further discussion or comments? All in favor, the consent agenda passes unanimously. We're now moving to the next item, and we'll invite up Major Vance Rosen to come and present a resolution regarding a budget amendment for the police department in the amount of $15,000 for the reimbursement of expenses for joint operations with the United States Secret Service.
Good morning, Madam Chair, ladies and gentlemen of the board. The United States Secret Service Electronics Crimes Task Force has a strategic alliance of federal, state, and local law enforcement agencies in order to confront and suppress technological-based crimes. Henry County Police Department has assets assigned to this task force. The Henry County Police Department personnel who are trained and equipped at the National Computer Forensic Institute will be made available for a three-year period to assist the U.S. Secret Service in the event of a large scare, large scare scale cyber attack against the sector of critical infrastructure within our state. The ultimate goal for both departments is to provide a productive framework for collaborative crime-fighting environment, which the resources of its participants can be combined to effectively make a significant impact on these crimes. The Department of Treasury establishes policy for reimbursements of certain overtime and other expenses to state and local law enforcement agencies involved in the joint operations, and the Henry County Police Department requests a budget amendment in the amount of $15,000 to facilitate this reimbursement.
Okay. Well, we thank you for that presentation. Are there any questions or comments from the board? Hearing none, the floor is now open for a motion.
Move.
And we have a motion?
Second.
And a second. Any further discussion? All in favor. Okay, the resolution passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we'll move into the next item, and we'll invite up Mr. Tim Coley, our Parks and Recreation Director, regarding a resolution authorizing the purchase of necessary equipment to transform the Nash Farm Activity Barn to a cultural arts center and flex space theater in the amount of $94,250, and also the approval for the accompanying budget amendment. Good morning.
Good morning, Madam Chair. I'm here with you on the help, this process. We've kind of worked together on this one, and, or the next two. The first one is, is transitioning our, our community barn into a more usable space, a cultural arts area for plays, for any kind of presentations, but also be used also as general rental space, too. So before you, is the cost for the curtains, the lighting and stuff for that entertainment or that cultural arts center for Nash Farms for the amount of $94,250.73. To get to this, this point, what we, Tim and his staff did is actually reach out, and there was a, a center that, that upgraded, that has some fairly brand-new equipment that we could get at a discounted price. And so we did that, being the best bang for our buck. So using the, through purchasing, using our used equipment, or I guess slightly-used equipment to be repurposed in this, this facility, we went with the company Productions and Concerts Incorporated for $94,251. This will be a transfer. This is a part of the impact fees for District Two for this project. We'll answer any questions if you have any.
Okay. So we've heard the presentation. Are there any questions? Okay. Commissioner Wilson?
Ray, you mentioned impact fees. We was under, I was under impression that we were splitting all the impact fees per district. Is that correct?
That's correct. This is District Two's impact fees that's allocated to District Two.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay. Commissioner Barn?
Yes, is this in line with our master plan at Nash Farm? Is it?
It does. It makes the barn, it makes it with our master plan. I'm not sure we have a copy of that, as an entertainment center. So the barn will still keep its capacity. It's just enhancing the, the, the things you can do there for entertainment.
Okay, good.
Okay, because that was one of my questions, too, and I guess you clarified that this is part of the master plan. Okay. How, if at full capacity for seating, how many, do we know how many people it will be able to seat? Because this is going to be great.
It's going to depend on the setup. If you set it for a small stage, or a large stage, or a concert, whatever, but still well over 100.
Okay, very good. Are there any other questions or comments from Commissioner Wilson?
Probably in the last year, you submitted a list of projects for capital improvements for roofs and structural improvements. Is, was this part of one of the projects that needed a roof repair, or?
It was not.
Okay. All right, thank you.
No, it's, it's in a good shape. Our building maintenance team, this, the barn was actually renovated a few years ago, so it does not have any current maintenance issues or needs. And again, as one of the things that District Commissioner was very adamant about, make sure it was a flex space that could be used for, for multi-use, multi-use facility, and bring additional cultural arts to that, that location.
Okay. Other questions or comments? Commissioner Clemmons?
I have a comment in reference, too. We have, I think, a theater space that's in McDonough that's owned by the school system, and the school system is building another performing arts space out in North Henry. The county does not own any theater space, any art space at all, and we don't have to go buy one. This is the cheapest way to create space that we can have CDBG funds used for. We can now attract smaller productions into Henry County, into this space, as well as indoor concerts. And Tim mentioned that it could seat about 100, but I think we've had more than over 200 in the space before. So with sitting tables down, or having chairs lined up, you're looking at being able to bring theater productions. And, and I think the state of Georgia has approved several incentives for entertainment. So now we get a chance to put this piece of the Henry County's property on that list for stage plays, traveling comedy theaters, or any type of productions that's county-wide instead of the school system theater production. So this will be the first theater piece that Henry County has ever had.
Okay. Any other questions or comments from the board? Hearing none, the floor is now open for a motion.
Move to approve.
We have a motion?
Second.
And a second. Any further discussion or comments? All in favor. Okay, that resolution passes unanimously, and we'll move into the next one, which is associated auto-managing as well. Okay?
Yes, ma'am. The next one is, was generally a, a decision about how we can enhance our, our community and provide back to the community. Over the last year, we've had several events that required a stage. Tim's crew had to, they, they have a little truck and trailer. They pull with some two-by, some four-by-eight pieces of plywood. They try to nail together and move back and forth. So we feel as staff, bringing you guys to our general impact, is the mobile stage that can be used for a lot of events, including the Veterans Memorial, any kind of production, any kind of, the recent, we had a recent community event that we had at the park in Stockbridge, that again, bringing out that stuff out is just, it's just, that's kind of almost unsafe. So we went out and found issues of trying to look at stage areas and the price for building a, a permanent fixture somewhere, we felt was over what we could buy a mobile stage that is a tandem wheel, all-inclusive, that will be maintained and set up by trained staff that can go anywhere that you guys have a need for, or we have any events within the community, for the community. So we put bids out through our purchasing department, sealed bids were submitted. We had two, had three responses. Two were qualifying, one was not, did not meet the specs, and we would like to submit approval for stage line, which are a low bidder at $94,075.
Okay. Well, we've heard the presentation. Are there any questions or comments from the board? Commissioner Wilson?
Where's the funding coming from for this?
This has come out of the general impact fees for the whole countywide.
And is it going to be a, something that we can rent out, something we can generate revenue, or how, how we're going to use that other than county?
Well, I think first comes is going to be the county events, if they have concerts. We have any county events, employee events, where a stage is needed, it could be transferred that way. We have actually discussed how feasible it is to rent it out and set it up, and would that cost be productive to paying our staff to do that. So at this point, we're trying to figure out what our, what our use would be internally, before we look externally. But I wouldn't say, I guess initially, we did not plan to rent it out for external customers, but I wouldn't say it's off the table.
That's all. Thank you.
Okay. Commissioner Barn?
Yes, I, does this unit have lights on it, a stage light as well, or is it just a stage?
No, that would, the sound and the light system would, would have to be rented separate, depending on what kind of event you were having.
So this is just a stage only? I mean, I know they have units that have the lights and everything on it already.
It's got the rigging for it. It's got the rigging for the speakers on both sides and the stage lights, but you have a, you'll, you'll have a sound company and a light company that'll come in and put that in for each event. We don't, we don't have the technicians to do that, you know, to do that type of-
Okay. I like this concept, and I'll tell you why. I know when I used to, we used to put the stages up, music in a parking square. I mean, it would take forever to do that, when you can just roll a unit in there. I guess you can just pull it with a regular truck? Is that-
You pull it with a regular truck, and it, and it looks like a trailer, and it's all hydraulic, and it comes out, the side comes out to be a top, and the stage spreads out, and it's, it's just mostly just hydraulic. You just push buttons and it, and it opens up to a full stage.
Yeah. And like the drummer stand, is it a different elevation, or do you have option where you can raise?
That would be up to the, that would be up to each act to bring whatever.
Bring their own platform. I, I like this concept. I tell you, I think this is going to save us a lot in overtime, because it really costs when you had to have those people come in and put these units up and, and build a stage. I, I do agree with Commissioner Wilson. I'd like to see where we could maybe rent it out at a profit, where we could get some funds out of it, and even to the other cities. They may have a concert or something that, that they may want to use it as well. So I looked at one of these units when I worked with City McDonough. I just couldn't get them to buy one.
I'm not sure if you see it, Commissioner. That's the stage itself, right there.
Yeah.
It is all-inclusive. It comes up, has a top, it folds in. I'm trying to show you the trailer. Kind of shows you the trailer as it is when it's packed up.
So basically you just pull up and just unfold it, and it's ready to go?
It takes, yes. It takes two people to do it. They actually will come in as certifier staff, so we have multiple members to be certified to make sure we're meeting all our risk issues. And it is hydraulic, has a hydraulic pumping motor on it.
And I guess I'd really like the idea. I may rent it out, like the Kiwanis may want to use it at the fair or something. I mean, there's a lot of options that we can use this particular piece of equipment, and I like it.
Okay. Commissioner Wilson, and then I've got a comment as well.
Does this price include a generator? You mentioned hydraulics. I'm assuming it's-
Everything.
It's got a generator. What size generator comes with it?
I'm not sure. I'm not sure what it is, Commissioner. It is, it's all self, it's all self-contained in the unit, but it's made just to run the hydraulic generator.
Did they not give us a KW on that generator? It's not wasted?
And I'm not sure it's even a KW generator. I think it's hydraulic. It runs off the battery of the truck.
So it's nothing that we can run equipment off of?
No, no, it's not made to run equipment. You have to have your standalone source.
You have to park it to-
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, it's definitely was not, it's not anything you would run your lights or sound or anything. It's, you, you have to have a source wherever you pull the stage to. You have your own, a different source for your, your high-
So it's basically just a 12-volt hydraulic generator?
It is, yes.
Hydraulic pump?
Hydraulic pump, yes.
Okay.
I'm sorry. The generator I was talking about was the generation of pump, not the electric generator.
Anything else, Commissioner Wilson? Okay. Well, if we do choose to lease it out to someone outside of the county, I just request that we make sure that it's the right fare or fee for doing that, and especially if there is any damage that we would be responsible for, that there is something built into the agreement, so that any repairs to this is done. So I just ask that you protect us in that way.
It does. And, Madam Chair, I think we have to come back and get the board to ratify any approval for any new leases like that, too. So we'll definitely involve you guys.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions or comments? Commissioner Wilson?
Just a clarification. What can be purchased with the impact fees from partial rent?
Impact fees is for new, new adventures, new things, that basically has a new mission or enhancement. For, you can add playground equipment, you can add entertainment. We cannot fix existing buildings. We can't go in and have a broke fence or replace fence. We can add new fields. We can add new, if you have a swing set for five, and you want to have a swing set for 10, they can add additional for the impact of new residents coming in or new mission.
All right, thank you.
Okay, okay. Commissioner Barn?
I see this company's from Canada.
Yes.
We can't work anything out by this from Stockbridge.
We tried to. They were actually bidding, but it was higher, even with the inclusive, the, the, we were actually confused, too, because the, the vendor for the company had a higher price than the company itself. So it was, it was a few dollars, a thousand. They undercut their actual salespeople.
All right. Any other questions? All right. Any other questions or comments from the board? Okay. Commissioner Wilson?
Service contract? It comes with a service contract?
The only service will be the hydraulic area. It does come, and they come down and they deliver. They do training. They will also train our, our fleet personnel, go over everything with them. But it's pretty simple. And there's a warranty.
So parts are available in case in a year or two, something goes wrong. These people are not gonna go out and bid?
It is. Stage Line is, is one of the biggest, is probably one of the two biggest companies that do, that do it worldwide. So they've been in business forever, and I don't think they will go anywhere anytime soon. And that was definitely highly recommend. The company in Stockbridge actually recommended two brands, and this is the top brand.
All right. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments from the board? Okay. Here are nine. The floor is now open for a motion.
Move to approve.
We have a motion.
Second.
And a second. Any further questions or comments? All in favor? Okay. If passage unanimous, let, thank you. Okay. We now will welcome up our county manager regarding our discussion, or actually, the, this has been an amended agenda item regarding a resolution regarding SPOS 5.
Good morning, Chair and Board members. Esther Wood has indicated there was an amendment to the agenda this morning regarding a presentation and discussion regarding SPOS. So it is my understanding that the board would like to move forward with requesting from the cities a list of their projects to be included in the intergovernmental agreement based on a 75-25 split. I will make the board aware of a couple of things that in the event that we do not receive that information from the cities, I believe Commissioner Clemens said that we will move forward based on any other provisions that are available or afforded to the county. Just as a reminder, if the cities do not elect to provide back to the county the IGA with a 75-25 split, the only other option would be that 70-30 split. And so I just wanted the board to be aware of that, and to answer any questions that the board may have.
Okay. Commissioner Clemens and I, okay, I'll let Commissioner Clemens go, and I've got a.
Let's make sure that we put a date of July 19th on that for the cities. I know that it's, I don't know what's going on with that. I didn't attend the meeting, but I don't know why we still don't have a list yet. So if we could just put a hard date of July 19th, that we should expect to have that list back from the cities or move forward with that.
And what we'll also need to do is have a call meeting of the board to have a call for the SPOS election. So we will have to do that after we receive the list back from the cities.
And so we have the IGA would reflect the 75-25 split?
That is correct.
Okay. And in our project, approved project list, I was really concerned about the jail pods, and you guys had talked about two aquatic centers. I would like to see us move two aquatic centers to the project list. And I don't know if that's something that we can do now, or if that's something that we have to do and amend it once we come back. But I would just like to know, you know, if the board has any comments on that. And is this something that we need to add to this now? Or how we should do that?
I would recommend you wait, because when you issue the call for the SPOS election, we have to, that's kind of it. That's kind of the last chance to make any changes. So Sheri and I talked about a called meeting. I don't remember the date.
July 24th.
So at that time, that's gonna be it. You're gonna, and so my recommendation would be wait until then, in case there's any other little issues.
But we could do it now, right?
Well, you could, but you may, but you may end up redoing it again. And that would be, I don't want to get, I'm concerned about getting too confusing with multiple project lists and trying to assemble what they are. There's just the practical element of making sure we have it right. So I think the, you certainly could make that vote today, but you're, you're still going to be voting, again, on the 24th for when you issue the call for the SPOS, or when you authorize the call for the election. So, and you're also gonna have to designate how much money to bond, and some things like that. So there's still gonna be some decisions to be made.
Okay. I've got some comments. Well, I think I saw Commissioner Thomas. Did you have a comment?
Yeah, but I don't mean.
Yeah, I'm calling for you now. Yeah, I'm going in order.
Okay. I just wanted to comment that it's definitely time for us to talk about the aquatic center, as Commissioner Clemens has put before us. We know that we are growing county, and we need to talk about what can we add to that, and how we can have a discussion with the school board system, to see what they're willing to do, with the community as well, to see what type of investments we can get from the community to support such an initiative. But one thing is for sure, this board cannot just make it happen alone. There has to be something that we do, looking at public-private partnerships as well. But I do think in going forth with SPOS 5, our community is looking for us to bring them something for them. And that aquatic center is going to show them that we're bringing something directly for families in this area. And Henry County is known for a high quality of living and bringing that, that quality of living before our residents, and they're looking for us to move them to another level. So we definitely need to consider that. We do need to look at some of the other projects that's on our list to determine what can be compromised. Do we need some of the things that are there to make sure we can make something that's nature pass?
I saw Commissioner Wilson and Commissioner Barham, and I'll make a comment.
So what I'm hearing is the, the board wants the cities to submit a project list. I don't know what type of project list. Is it a general project list or itemized project list? Because if you look at the county's project list, we're not itemized. Some districts are. District 2 is not. So if we asking the cities to submit a itemized project list, we should have our list itemized as well. So that's, that's what I'm having issue with for is the cities submitting a list. What type of list are we asking them to submit for us? I'm confused.
So I apologize for interrupting, but as part of the intergovernmental agreement, you have to have project lists submitted as part of the exhibits. And while it doesn't specify if it has to be a detailed, itemized, specific list, it just says a list. So we have to include what they're going to spend their projects on, I mean, spend their money on. Now, it can be a list that just says park improvements. It can be a list that says transportation improvements. But we have to have that as part of the agreement.
So I think what we're saying, what we're recommending is that whatever list they provide has to be, has to meet the requirements of the SPOS law, which requires you, the law's a little, it's a little loose in the language. It requires you to identify a list of projects that the voters reasonably understand what they are. That's the short version of it. And we, we need to include municipal projects, whether or not we have an intergovernmental agreement. Because in the absence of an intergovernmental agreement, there's still a provision whereby the cities are entitled to share in the SPOS and use it for municipal projects. So as long as their list is lawful, we don't really have any say in what that list is.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Commissioner Barham, and then I'll make a comment.
Yeah. Last meeting we had was a little disturbing to me. But here we are today, and I've actually sat down with some of the city people in McDonough, and we've had some communications about our list. And I would urge each commissioner to sit down with the cities that they represent, and let's see if we can get all this worked out. I'm not sure I'm on board with aquatic centers, but I would like to see us all go back to drawing board, and let's see what we can work out with the cities. If we can't work anything out, but we're all in this together. And I do have some questions. And I know it came up in the meeting, and I'll just ask this question. Do you have the capital list? Can you put that up? I don't know if I could, if you could clear that up. I would like to, there seemed to be some, some conversation that night about the District 2 fire station. And as I recall, that was a replacement of Station 5. And there was some conversation at some point in time that the city of Hampton was gonna donate property to the county for this fire station. Is that correct, Ms. Clemens?
I have not had a intergovernmental agreement or memorandum of understanding in reference to that. I have asked for that. We have been recommended that when we look at where fire stations are placed, that they'll be based on population and growth. So we can't make a determination of where the station goes without those things being done. So.
Okay. The other question that I had, I had a conversation with the chief of police, and I know we got a lot of precincts, police precincts in this list. And Ms. Matthews, is these police precincts, are they standalone buildings? Are we talking about adding a room on to the existing fire station where police officers can come in and do some office work? What, what are we talking about?
At, at the cost that's listed in the countywide project list, it is my understanding that these are standalone facilities. This will not be similar to that, where you may have like a substation where they're part of an existing commercial development. These are new facilities for, within those respective districts.
And when we be, build a, a separate police precinct, and, and we got to put staff in there, versus having those out on the road, they gonna be working in the office.
That is correct. If you build a precinct, you've got to have bodies to certainly house it, and make sure that someone's there if citizens or constituents do come in.
The conversation that I had with the chief, and I've had the same conversation with you, he would rather see people out on the road versus a police precinct. My understanding, he may have 10 calls a week come into a precinct, and where that officer could be answering 10 calls a day. So are we getting the most bang for our buck with the police precincts, or would we get more bang for our buck having the police officers out patrolling?
Well, I think what, what I've heard from the board is that you all want to make sure that we have officers that are out. I recall the police chief during our budget conversation discussed with the board the need to increase our police. And that was one of the reasons, I believe, the board amended our budget to add 10 additional officers to the already 10 that was approved in the budget, so that we would have proper coverage, or at least start working towards proper coverage within those respective zones. So obviously, if, if the question is, do I want to have officers that are out policing, that's always gonna be the response. We want to make sure that we have officers out policing.
Okay. The only other question that I have, and I, I just need to understand, when I look at Ola's Police Precinct and Fire Station, it's $4.5 million. And then the Fairview Police Precinct Fire Station is $6 million. Can you tell me what the difference is?
The Ola Police Precinct and Fire Station for 17 at the 4.5, and then the Fairview Police Precinct and Fire Station as a rebuild at $6 million. We've already acquired the property for the Fairview, and I'm not sure regarding the Ola precinct, if we've, if we've identified property. It is my understanding, I believe, that we do have a location in place, but I'm not sure in terms of what the difference in the cost would be. I would imagine that the Fairview Police Precinct may have a larger footprint. But again, I'm not, I'm not too sure in terms of what the difference in the cost would be.
Okay. I know the Ola precinct does not have a property. We've actually looked at about three different properties down there. But I'm just, I just wanted to understand what the $1.5 million difference was.
I think Brad can probably explain a little bit better.
Yes, Commissioner. I think if we've talked over the last few years about that North precinct, and that would be a bigger footprint. Right now, we're leasing, or in agreement with Stockbridge on the, on the North precinct. Something ever happened in that precinct, we move to the Fairview area. If, if Fairview decide, I mean, Stockbridge decide to do a police department in the future, where we locate our North precinct will be located to the property, the building property.
So are we considering moving out of the Stockbridge precinct?
We're not considering moving out, but we got a plan for the future, if there is a need to move in the future. There's no doubt about it, that Stockbridge is looking to the police department. It's all, all over social media this week. So I think if we have to plan as a community, we need to plan for our future Henry County. And it might be, as we continue to grow, if we have 300,000 people in the next 10 years in Henry County, we will need larger, and we will need a footprint up in the area for police coverage.
Well, you cleared that up, and I, I could understand us having a, have a bigger footprint up there, and that makes sense. And, but what kind of lease do we have with the Stockbridge on the present precinct? How many years do we have?
It's under the SDS. I think it's under that agreement with our service delivery, if I remember right.
I, I believe there's a separate agreement with the city of Stockbridge in terms of the facility that we're in. I know that the county is responsible for the full maintenance of that facility. And so without me having the agreement in front of me, I don't want to misspeak, but I can certainly provide a copy to the entire board, so that you all can have the details of that agreement.
Okay. The only other comment is, I'll just repeat what I said earlier. I would like, I would hope that each commissioner and each city would reach out to their commissioners and, and try to sit down and, and let's talk about this before we get too far gone into this thing, and, and not, won't be any turning back. But we got to work together, and it's kind of after the fact. I, I was disappointed that the cities came up at the last minute and threw this out there on top of us. They had every opportunity to have a representative at every SPOS meeting, and they didn't do that. And we, we always talked about the 75-25, and then after we approve a list, then we kind of get hammered. But, but anyway, I really will hope we can work this out. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Commissioner Barham, we're gonna, Commissioner Wilson, then myself, and then we'll come to Commissioner Clemens. Okay? Any comments? None? Okay. Well, my comments are, first of all, Sheri, are you, did you have a presentation to review what the county's, just to at least show what the county is recommending for its projects that it approved, Board of Commissioners before last? And as you're doing that, I just ask that those who are watching this, please do understand that this process began back in March of last year. It involved a committee. It involved invitations to the cities. It involves staff to definitely go and do homework. So what you see here has just not come up suddenly. So I ask that when we just, you don't have to read all of that, but I just want people to, to see that when we go through that. Do note that as you look at this list, that it is heavy public safety and transportation related. Those are a lot of the major concerns that we hear from our citizens. Yes, public safety, transportation are major things. I do want to highlight, I think Commissioner Clemens made a comment about the pod. I, I'm in support of the pod remaining. That is part of the future growth that we've got to plan for. So I, I am supportive of that remaining. Regarding the transportation projects that we have, and I'm just gonna highlight some that I want you to look at when these lists are thrown up here, is that we've got projects that are identified in our comprehensive transportation improvement plan that both the county and the cities and the citizens identified as major corridors that need to be addressed. So when you look at this list, as it is presented for what this Board of Commissioners approved, it includes State Route 81. It talks about McDonough Parkway. It talks about Peaksville Road. It talks about Walk Wry Road. It talks about West Village Park. And it also has some signalization regarding Highway 155. So it is crossing all across this county, including the cities. So I encourage us to understand that this is a list that our voters and individuals have had input into. And I do hope that we can continue this conversation. But regarding the aquatic center, I am glad to hear that there is a thought about the aquatic center, but I don't know where it's gonna come from at this moment. But it is something that our citizens, I know I went to many of those SPOS meetings, and I heard citizens speak about that. So if there is an opportunity to include the aquatic center in some form or fashion, that is a great thing, but we need to figure out what is gonna be given up to make it happen. So again, Sheri, I don't know if you can just at least present the list of, you don't have to read through it. I just want you to at least identify what the projects are that this Board of Commissioners actually approved of a couple of weeks ago.
Can I ask a question?
Sure. Okay. So.
I have a quick question. On the fleet replacement, the $17 million, is that something that can be added to the capital project list?
Commissioner, I think you were in the Henry County Public. Had issues with replacement. We found this a way not to be part of the tax base, trying to find a way to have sustainable funding for a six-year period for that fire truck.
But can it be added?
It can be added to our capital.
Let me say this. The reason that I'm asking, can it be added to the project, to the capital project list? Because I think that if we can build a jail, we can build aquatic centers. And I really would like to see that $17 million for fleet replacement go to the capital project list, and we give the voters to Aquatic Center in place of that. We build in jails, we might as well build something that we can help keep kids out of jail as well. So I would like to see, so I would like to make the, you know, we'll go ahead and let Sheri do this, but I definitely would like to see us discuss that, the fleet. Because it can go into capital improvement. There's no reason why.
We can get a capital improvement. It's not included.
So it doesn't go away. It's just that we give the voters an opportunity to get two aquatic centers along, you know, along with the SPOS. And I think that's something that the community can get behind as well. And I just want, you know, if the other board members, I just want to know. And I just want, you know, if the other board members, I just want to know.
Okay. Well, I still got, I want her to go through this list, and then we'll open it back up to the other commissioners as well. So if you'll just show that list, but thank you for pointing that out, Commissioner Clemmons, about the fleet replacement and the potential option regarding the aquatic centers. Okay? So Sherri, if you'll just start with that first one again, just because I'm not sure if people saw the first one. It showed the countywide before you go into the district. Just if you start then, then we get into each of the districts. Because I want to make sure that our citizens have this on record. So again, it shows our, you know, all of the items that are recommended. And it also shows the SLOSH collections and so forth. So thank you.
Yes. So the first sheet, obviously, is the countywide projects. And I do want to, I will put the different, the district project list up. But we did go back, and I want to make sure that everyone is clear that with either option, we are not recommending removing any transportation projects. I think there may have been some misunderstanding that if the county went to a five-year SLOSH program or a 70-30 option, that transportation projects were being cut. If that was the understanding, I will certainly reiterate that that is solely not what we were trying to do. And that's not being proposed to the board. Based on the 75-25 that this board has approved, 59.54% of the projects are all transportation projects. So that is more than half. And then about 16% is for public safety. Again, that includes the jail pod as well. And then we have 12.6% in capital. And then within our fleet replacement, that's 9.63%. Now, if we talk about, and I'll put the list up in terms of district projects, every district has more than 50% of their project lists dedicated to transportation. District one, 100% of the project list is transportation. District two, 61.18%. District three, 90.01%. District four, 67.06%. And then District five, 94.34%. So in terms of hearing what the citizens have said in terms of transportation, the project list that this board has approved wholeheartedly represents transportation projects. I just wanted you all to be aware of that as well.
Thank you.
We have District one. That's District two. District three. District four. And then that's District five.
Okay. Well, thank you. And again, I just ask again that everyone, please make a note of that. I'm glad to hear that there's more conversation or some conversation even about the aquatic center. So I conclude my comments at this time. We had Commissioner Wilson to come, and then we'll come to Commissioner Clemmons.
I'm not in favor of moving the capital vehicle replacement for, to the capital list off the SLOSH. And the reason, we've had a capital list for building maintenance for the last several years. And we have not been able to get enough support to push that through. These roofs have been leaking for a while, and we have, and the cost of repairing them is increasing. So if you move 17 meters to a capital list, I don't see that that's going to pass either. Aquatic centers, I don't see putting two in the county. We can't even maintain the buildings we have. So putting two more, that's just going, that's going to put more projects on the capital list that we're not being able to approve. But I am in favor of putting one somewhere in the county. And for those that have been listening to what my comments for aquatic centers have been for the last year is to use, utilize the Jason Harper Arena to put the aquatic center there because we don't utilize that, that building for a year round. So we can put some money into that, but I'm not for putting two aquatic centers in the county. The infrastructure is already built up around the Jason Harper Arena. We have parking lots, restrooms, that type thing. But moving the equipment, the replacement from the SLOSH to the capital, I'm not in favor of that.
Okay. Any other comments? Okay. All right. Commissioner Clemmons?
I'm waiting on you to bring the motion, ask for the motion.
We're still up for discussion. You have any other, any additional comments? Any other comments from any commissioner at this time? Okay. So the floor is now open for a motion.
I would like to make the motion that the IGA should reflect the 75-25 split between the county and the cities. The approved project list should be amended to remove the fleet placement to capital improvement list and add two aquatic centers to the countywide project list. The city should provide to the county no later than July 19th and execute a copy of the IGA's from their respective cities. If the IGA's are provided, the county will proceed with method two as outlined in the SLOSH law. We'd go by the law.
All right. We have a motion with those amendments. Commissioner Holmes?
Yeah, I would like to add to that motion that we are adding the aquatic centers from the Level Two list. Also, we're removing the jail pods from the capital list. And that we're reducing the vehicle replacement to 6 million so that we can build two aquatic centers for 11 million apiece.
Okay. Well, Commissioner Clemmons, you made that a motion. Are you okay with those amendments?
So what are we doing? We changing the?
He says in addition to.
So as long as we move the jail pod to the capital list, we got to keep the jail pod?
Yeah. But yeah, we're talking about the SLOSH list, the countywide list.
So the jail pod goes to the capital list. Just restate it, Commissioner Holmes.
So I'm talking about the capital list only. So basically, I'm adding to the motion to amend the countywide list to add two aquatic centers from the Level Two list that was presented at the last meeting. Remove the jail pods because we're going to, we're going to add that to the capital list. And also reduce the vehicle replacement allotment to 6 million dollars. Both aquatic centers will be 11 million apiece on the countywide list for SLOSH five.
So Commissioner, are you saying the jail pod would not be included on SLOSH but would progress under the other capital financing plan? Okay.
I'm seconding the motion.
Well, she, the District Two Commissioner would have to amend her motion in that manner.
All right. Now I got to write it down. Okay. So the motion is the IGA should reflect the 75-25 split between the counties and the cities. The approved project list should be amended to remove the jail pod and place it on the capital improvement list to reduce the fleet replacement by 6 million and add that to the 10 million that we have for the jail pod and give us two aquatic centers. The city should provide the county no later than July 19th and execute a copy of the IGA from their respective cities. If the IGA's are provided, the county will proceed with method two as outlined in the SLOSH law.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. So at this time, we're in a discussion. Commissioner Wilson, and I've got a question too.
Now, we have a Phase One and Phase Two already in place for capital project list, right? For, we have a Phase One, Phase Two. We have 15 million dollars that needs to be for fixing these roofs, right?
Yes, sir. There's a total capital project list with two different funding mechanisms.
Okay. So what's that total now, as of today? Is it 90 million dollars? The last time we looked at that, was that 90 million?
Yes, sir. Maintenance was 15 million. We maxed it 15 million on our bank loan part. Did we go to our governmental committee?
So we add these other projects to that capital list, where's that, what's that total going to be?
We'll have to figure that. Get with David and figure that.
I think we need to know that number before we vote on this because then we're going to figure out how we're going to fund this capital project list because that may be one of those referendums that may have to be, how are we going to fund that? Because now we're talking 150 million dollars, maybe. I don't know. So you can add, you can add it to the list all day long, but how are you going to fund the list?
And that, that's something that this board is going to have to decide on. If you all will recall, we've brought to the board several options in terms of funding mechanisms. We have the Governmental Services Authority. We have the Urban Redevelopment Agency. And then the other option would be a GO bond or bonding, which the voters would have to vote on. So this board is going to have to make the decision in terms of what we want to spend and how we're going to spend it. Now, we'll make recommendations in terms of the better options depending on the type of capital investment and depending on where it's located. As you all know, under the Urban Redevelopment Agency, we've got to have a plan in place. And one of the things that we're going to talk to you all about after this is the move to go ahead and get that moving because we've got to have a plan. We can't create the Urban Redevelopment Agency without the plan in place because those board members need to know what they're working towards. So you all are going to have to decide what we want to pass on to the taxpayers in terms of bonding or decide if we're going to do a lot of the expenses under our Governmental Services Authority, which wouldn't require the voters to have to vote on it. But ultimately, it's monies that's got to be paid back. And it's monies that we've got to decide where we want to spend it or how we want to spend it.
So we're going to ask the voters to vote for SLOSH. Turn around and maybe ask them to vote on a bond referendum to raise your taxes to pay for the projects that's not on the SLOSH list.
Is that a fair assumption? I think that would be a question for the entire board. This board, you all will determine which projects go on the SLOSH list.
That's what I'm hearing. I'm hearing that we're going to remove project from a SLOSH list, move it to a capital list, then we're going to ask the voters to vote on that list and their taxes may go up to complete the capital list.
Okay. Wait a minute. Let Commissioner Wilson finish.
So that's what we're asking the citizens to do before we make a vote on this today.
I can jump in. The answer to that be, you might, that might be what you do. But ultimately, this board decides how to, the board as a body will decide how to proceed with those finances.
Okay. That's all for me.
On the capital list today, we're voting on the SLOSH five countywide list, amending that particular list. The voters are asking for more quality of life in Henry County. When we put the aquatic center up at the last meeting and when it was published in the paper, I received a lot of calls, and I'm pretty sure the rest of you guys received calls too. The senior citizens, the younger citizens, everyone in Henry County wants aquatics. So the best way to get this SLOSH to pass, along with the road infrastructure improvements that are needed in this county, is to get, is to give the voters what they want. And having an aquatic center on the northern end of the county and the southern end of the county is a great way to award our citizens.
Okay. I've got a comment, and then I'm going to come back to you, Commissioner Wilson. Wait a minute. Wait, wait, wait. I've got the floor. I'm going to give it back to you in a minute. How much, if you'll put that list up there on those Level Two projects, how much was the aquatic centers each?
They were 11 million dollars.
Each?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. And I will just say, my position still is that I do not think that we need to change the jail pod. I do agree that we definitely need to have something that's going to keep our people out of jail. But obviously, this is a forecast that we have regarding the aquatic center. The 11 million dollars needs to come from something. So I just ask, you know, district commissioners, are you all willing to come up with where that 11, at least one of those aquatic centers would be a focus? Because not only do we need to think about the capital investment of the aquatic center, we've got to think about the operation and maintenance and the liability that's all associated with that as well. So that is my position on that. So Commissioner Wilson?
I'll just say all I need to say. I'm good. I think you.
Okay. Commissioner Barham, and I think I hear Commissioner Wilson.
Yeah. We've already got in a hole with the 70-30 thing, and now we're talking about another 11 million dollars here and there. I still say we need to go back to our cities. We need to ask our cities to sit down with each commissioner and let's go over this list and see if we can further define this list and see if we can come up with something that works for everybody. And that's, that's all I got to say about it.
Okay. Thank you. Commissioner Clemmons?
I think the motion is on the floor, and you guys, I think the headline needs to say jail or pools. And that's basically what we're talking about, whether we're going to fund the jail or we're going to fund pools. And I still am wholeheartedly in agreement that maybe we do need a jail pod. But I think that we need a pool more than we need a jail pod right now. And so I want to keep the motion on the floor, and we can just take the vote for jails or pools.
Okay. We're still in discussion mode after the second motion. Commissioner Thomas?
One thing we've already proved in Henry County that when we invest in our people, invest in recreation, invest in our children, it pays back. We often talk about the Little League baseball team that comes to Henry County every year. They use our facilities for their tournaments and the dollars that it brings to the community, that it brings to the Recreation Department, that it brings to the hotel industry, that it brings to the restaurant industry. We're doing the same thing again with these aquatic centers. And as Commissioner D. Clemmons has stated, we want to have something that prevents us from having to continue to build more and more jails. And when I look at the cost of this jail, how big is it that you need that much money? Can we take some of that money away and add to this aquatic center as well? But we're opening up the door, opportunity here for other types of competitions to take place here. So this aquatic center may cost a little bit initially. But when you start looking at the competitions that we can bring to this county and now the revenues it's going to bring to this county and the fact that our school system is now paying, I think, about $50,000 a year just for their children to go to Clayton County to practice for their team to compete in other areas, we have to consider it's time to invest in our students here, it's time to invest in our county, and it will give back to us. So the aquatic centers are necessary. We just have to decide. They are necessary. And we cannot continue to pay other counties for our children. Our Recreation Department now are busing our children to Rockdale during the summer to use their facilities. And I said, "You doing what?" He said, "We have to bus them over there." Now, do you know the liability of putting those children on that bus to take them to Rockdale County, to participate in Rockdale County pools and facilities, then bring them back to our schools, bring them back to, I almost said our school system, bring them back to our county safely? We can stop that. And yes, we do maybe need a jail pod, but does it have to be as big? Yes, we do need to decide how much money we can put into that. And we also need to talk about what can the school system do to help move this forward. But I know one thing, voters will come out to say, "We want these centers for our children." And they will bring income to this county.
Okay. Commissioner Wilson?
I think the headlines need to read new SLOSH list versus tax raise, increase in taxes. Because if we adjust that, then we go to a capital project list, that's exactly what you're looking for. We're going to increase your property taxes to pay for it. If you really want to get to aquatic centers here, put them on the capital. Then let the voters go to the poll for the capital project list. Let them vote for that. So.
My question is, is someone from the Sheriff's Department can speak towards the jail pod?
I don't think there's anyone from.
Okay. Go for it. Can you come up? No, no. Can you come to the, can you come to the?
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am, Chair. I spoke with the sheriff last summer and in detail, or beginning this summer and throughout the year. And we did have a period where we were hitting our max daily inmate allowance. As we move forward, we do have an increase in call volume through all our public safety, and which is increasing our jail capacity. One thing, if we don't do SLOSH on the jail pod, we will have to find a way immediately to turn around and make that happen. If you remember, the reason we have the jail now is because a federal mandate came in and overcrowding and made Henry County build that jail. We want to avoid that. We want to build one on our terms rather than a federal mandate to make that happen. So if we do not do on the SLOSH, we do need to put on a capital and move forward a capital plan to execute the pod over there. That pod is to go in that empty spot. If you're going down Henry Parkway, there's one spot left for one additional pod before we have to move out to the south side of that complex.
Okay. And so the next question I have is, can someone speak to the vehicle replacement item that's here? Because I understood it's been reduced already before now during the SLOSH process. We still do need to think about, you know, even if this has to go before the voters, and if that is not passed.
if that is not passed, what are we gonna have to do with that? Because keep in mind that a special purple local option sales tax means that other people who are visiting Henry County get to pay for things that will help lower the tax burdens to our residents and citizens and businesses. So, that's why this is so important. We need to understand where we are and potentially what's gonna happen even after this. So, that's why we've got these questions. So, if you can speak to the potential of the vehicle replacement plan, and especially if it goes to capital, if it goes to voters and is not passed, then what is that gonna mean to the vehicles that we have here?
Yes, ma'am. We do our planning model for our capital. One of the things we've always had an issue with in Henry County is how do we maintain a adequate fleet of competent equipment? I know we've just this year, this decommissioned fire trucks from 1995, that they were actually having to manufacture parts. Our goal was to provide our citizens and our staff with adequate equipment. To do that, we found a mechanism SLOs. We're looking at that to use tax money, use that penny coming from all over to help maintain our fire trucks, police cars, ambulances, and not just for public safety, but also our tractors. We get calls for grass every day while the grass is not cut, to get additional tractors or replace the tractors. We have that are very old and stay in the shop a lot. That's the intent of that. Can it be put to capital? It can. It would just be an increase on that capital project list to do it. We looked at programming out six years and have a six-year plan of which vehicles need to be bought every year to maintain our fleet and which ones need to be decommissioned. And that's what that planning was. Henry County's never had a plan for your vehicle. We've, every year, whatever's left over in the budget, whether it's two hundred thousand or two million, you basically did the Hunger Game budget method. You got here first so you can get some money for some equipment as a department head. And we're just trying to change that methodology to have a program process to make sure our equipment is moving forward.
All right. Well, my comments, and I'll go to Commissioner Holmes. I would say that we do understand, we've seen a previous presentation, that most of those in our jails currently are dealt with mental health issues. And so, and at the rate that we're growing, we are seeing some level of increase of inmate population there as a rate of that growth as well. I really wish Aquatic Centers could prevent everyone from going to jail, but it doesn't. And I do agree that we do need to think about an Aquatic Center because it's not just for our children, but it's also for our seniors. But I do agree with Commissioner Thomas that basically said, when we talk about Aquatic Centers, it's got to be a joint partnership with the Board of Education as well. So, again, I am definitely in favor of Aquatic Centers. I do agree that we need to talk about that. We just need to make sure that we're, again, focusing on those things that we need to say. And again, these lists that we're talking about is identifying items that have been investigated, researched, and presented to us today. The same thing that I've been mentioning to the cities. We've been going through this process since March of last year, and these are some good items that I believe are good. It's strong public safety, a strong transportation, and it does have quality of life issues in it as well. So, those are my comments. I'll go to Commissioner Holmes now.
Brad? Sherri? Did we have money in SLOs four for pods, jail pods?
No.
We had improvements to the kitchen area, the living area. Yes, then maintenance improvements were done to remodel the kitchen area, make it bigger to accommodate. There was no jail pod.
Wasn't there an addition done not too long ago to the jail?
It was in SLOs three. I think it was in SLOs three.
Yeah, it's been, yeah, no, it's been ten years.
Okay.
Anything else, Commissioner Holmes?
No, thank you.
Okay. So, we've heard a motion and a second and discussion. So, all in favor of that emotion that was amended, please signal by raising your hand. Three in favor, those against, three against. Okay? Any further discussions or comments from the board? Okay? I would like to make a motion that we definitely approve the seventy-five twenty-five split, that we do consider the vehicle replacement program to the capital list, but that we at least add one Aquatic Center to that, which, again, because a fleet replacement is about seventeen million, Aquatic Center eleven million, that's what I recommend, that we go for it. And I do agree that we need to have a list from the cities of their items that they have, that they will be recommending for SLOs five as well. So, that's my motion that I make. Is there a second?
Uh-huh. Can we add two?
Yeah, go ahead. That guy come in.
I didn't understand. So, we're moving, we're back to the first motion that we made. We're taking the capital and moving it to, taking the fleet, moving it to capital.
Moving it to capital.
And how much is that, sixteen?
Seventeen point seven million.
Okay. So, we're only how much short from the two Aquatic Centers? So, we can leave the seventeen million for two Aquatic Centers to have, and then we can work with the school board to bring the difference. I mean, we still have other resources to bring in. So, I would like to keep it, but I still wanna make it to two, at the seventeen million, and we just have to work with that, even if we have to come from...
Okay. Clarify again for me what you're saying.
The seventeen million, I think, is enough to do the two.
Oh, you're saying two?
Mm-hmm, with the seventeen million.
My motion stands at one, stands at one, eleven million. And then, of course, that still leaves some, at least six point seven million for vehicle replacement, and still whatever's remaining goes to... So, that's the motion that I've made. Is there a second? Okay? Hearing none, it fails. Okay? Any other comments or questions from the board?
Making another motion.
Okay.
I make a motion that the IGA should reflect the seventy-five twenty-five split between the counties and the cities, that the city should provide to the county no later than July nineteenth, an executed copy of the IGAs from their respective cities. If the IGAs are provided, the county will proceed with method to its outline in the SLOs law, and we can deal with our list later.
Okay, we got a motion and a second. All in favor? Okay, four passes, two fails. So, we'll move forward with that motion just made.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so at this time now, we will move to our next item, which relates to our public comments. And so, at this time, we'll allow for each individual that has signed up prior to the meeting to be granted five minutes to speak to the board. And again, how many do we have?
We have one today, Chair, Mayor Anthony Ford, City of Stockbridge.
Okay, well, great. Well, welcome up. The Honorable Mayor Ford.
Chair Wood, Commissioners, Mayor Anthony Ford, City of Stockbridge. Actually, the July nineteenth date for projects for the City of Stockbridge is no problem, obviously. I would imagine, I can't speak for the rest of the cities, I would imagine that's no problem for them as well. But yet, I will say to you that I and the City of Stockbridge, and I would think that the rest of the cities is still interested in that seventy thirty split. I know you just passed a motion here in reference to, for the IGA to be seventy-five twenty-five. I'm not really happy about that in that aspect, as we last met at the informational meeting a couple weeks or so ago. But obviously, it's not a, maybe not a total done deal at this point. I'm still optimistic. But also, I know Commissioner Barham's mentioned about meeting with McDonough and meeting with cities, his city that he represents in a sense. So, I still have an open mind, and the fact that we can still have open dialogue. So, for the three commissioners that touch Stockbridge, that's Commissioner Holmes, Clemmons, and Thomas, still like to sit up and try to meet and try to resolve some things if we can in this aspect, or redevelop, or have additional dialogue. I know that the county manager and assistant manager have been meeting with the city managers as well, and they've had some good dialogue on some things, and there could potentially be something else that we can present as a collective group from the cities to you all to maybe have a, maybe a change of heart, change of mind in reference to what goes on SLOs list and looking at the seventy thirty split in this aspect. And so, on that note, I believe that is all I have to say, unless there's, I don't know unless there's any questions from you specifically, but still like to have open dialogue if we can.
Well, this is public comment. We don't usually interrupt. We just hear from our citizens.
Okay, I should know that, right? Thank you very much.
Okay. So, that concludes our public comments. Okay, so, thank you as well for that. We will now move to the approval of our amendments for the June fourth regular Board of Commissioners meeting, and also for the June eighteenth regular Board of Commissioners meeting. Were there any changes or revisions to those amendments? Hearing none, the floor is now open for a motion.
Move to approve.
We have a motion to approve?
Second.
And a second. Any further questions or comments? All in favor? The amendments are unanimously approved. So, at this time, we'll open the floor for any comments from the commissioners. I'll just make the comment, just to understand that, again, July the twenty-fourth is the call meeting for the SLOs for this board. So, again, looking forward to those discussions as well and votes. Any other questions or comments from the commissioners? All right, county manager, any comments?
Chair Wood, this is the beginning of our new fiscal year, and so what we typically try to do is update the board on things that have come up over the course of the last couple of months. During some of our board meetings, there's been several questions and inquiries posed to staff, and so what we wanna do is give you all an update, because we do, I know a lot of times you all think we're over there taking notes, or we're jiding down things that we need to follow up with you all on. So, this morning, if you all will just indulge us for a couple of minutes, we wanna kinda go over some of the things that you all have requested, either of the county manager's office or specifically of staff, and give you an update on where we are with those projects. At this time, I'll turn it over to Brad, and then I'll just kinda chime in on some of the specific projects that may be within my arena.
So, Commissioners, as Sherri said, we just jotted down the bullet points and questions, and we'll just go through them one at a time, and briefly, if you have any other questions, we'll ask them at the end. Some questions asked about the master plan for the parks. We're in the process now, so our rec department is actually doing a master plan for every park. We would like to see in ten years where we want every park in Henry County to be and have that guidance, like we do at Nash Farm, have that guidance, so we have some direction on which way to go. The building permit fee update, we have RFP being developed at this time. Staff's already reached out to the ones who did it last time for updates, and anything that's changed moving forward. So, that is in progress, along with the building fee that we asked about two meetings ago is the fee that was done by the consultant that done analysis of the general areas, and we're ready to bring that to the board in August. Update our master trail map, it's in progress. As you know, our master transportation plan has a trail map in it, has a sidewalk map in it. We're actually looking at that and making sure that still fits our needs, and even additions to where we've approved new areas, new subdivisions, new populated areas, to make sure that has been added on there, and that has been some consideration done. Our fire department, issue with the ISO rating. We have actually requested ISO to come in for our evaluation. Now, we have Station sixteen open, we have our last recruit school in process for our staffing, and that has been requested. We have not received a date as of yet of when that would come in. That is a lengthy process that involves not just the fire, but also involves nine-one-one communications and the water authority. Our transit plan, we're looking to update our transit plan, including additional fixed routes in the future, working definitely with McDonough in the future of what possibility we have for that route, enhancing the Fairview Route, which we now have some pretty consistent riders participating. So, we're looking at any ways we can to partnership with others and making sure we can add additional routes that are needed. Our rebranding, RFP's been developed, ready to go out for RFP for assistance in our county rebranding. The CID for one thirty-eight Eagles Landing is in process. Our rescue task force, we discussed a few meetings back about our public safety, our third or fourth phase into our Emesberg trip last August, we've completed fifty-eight training classes. There's a tabletop next week, and also a full-scale drill the week after. We have included all of public safety entities, including the county, city, and a few external agencies, including the state, will be here to actually observe. We're actually one of the first ones to implement this in the state, and we're excited about that process. The red school zone project's in process. Our sidewalk bank, we're looking at the feasibility about having a sidewalk bank. If you know, as you know, as we do some developing, we'll have a development come in and put three hundred foot of sidewalk in the middle of nowhere. How do we take that and bank that and use that to put it where it's needed? There's other communities who are approving that, and so we've actually reached out and working on that process. Consolidated countywide transportation plan is one of the things we've been tasked with and working for, working towards. Our Henry Wellness Center is open and operating, and I tell you, you guys have been there to see that, and I hope you have not, but I kinda hope you have had a chance to utilize it. I had to go there a couple of weeks ago for an issue. I tell you, I was overly impressed of how well, not just treated, but how you cared for there, and our employees are the same, and utilization has been up. So, we're excited to continue that, and hopefully, that will show in the future with our benefits package of how we've reduced our claims countywide. We're also working on a countywide building safety plan for all county buildings. As you know, our environment's changed in this nation, and safety's number one. How do we make sure all our safety, our facilities are safe, and how all our employees are safe and know what to do in the case of an emergency, whether it's a natural disaster, emergency, or tornado, or any kind of domestic terrorist-type operation, which we hope will never happen, but wanna be prepared for if it is. Applications are open for our Fall Citizens Government Academy. Some of you guys came out last time for our last academy, which was a success, and we wanna invite you guys out to be part of that also. And all of our citizens that are watching today, if you're interested, please go to our website and sign up. It's a seven-week class, and we're very proud of that and sharing what the county does for our citizens. We updated a tower project earlier. It's in process. It is definitely going to be a game changer for us in how we introduce our reporting, not just our day-to-day operations, but reporting our employee portals. Employees can go in and change their information instead of having to come fill out a paper form. We're excited about that. Have staff working on the trail in Lucas Grove at the Senior Center. It's project shared with Lucas Grove, and that's in design phase right now, and playground equipment, part of the impact fee for Lucas Grove Rec Center. It's in progress. Working on our Senior Center, electric pay. I think we've actually got some conclusions on that and got that worked out. We had some technical issues through our processes, but I think we've got that squared away. Our street rights on Jonesboro Road, we went through engineering, got quotes, we got ready to go, then we had to, we got a little stop sign from GDOT, and they want their approval now, so since it is a state-maintained facility, so GDOT's should have their approval here very soon, and we can move forward with that. Cable franchise fee, supposed to be requesting an audit and guidance through the process of that for Commissioner Barham. We heard you, and we're definitely gonna have to, it's a process to go through, and it's a lengthy, we're working on getting that identified and that audit done. Crossing guard documents asked for a couple of meetings ago. We cannot find an agreement that exists for crossing guards. So, we're providing crossing guards, as I'm understanding, a handshake from years ago. It just has happened ever since. So, there's the document that was requested by the board for that. Building fee proposal, again, I actually did it right there, will be coming in August. And our impact fee study, which was requested by the board, Dante's actually reached out. We hope our new impact fee study will go in and measure what it is now, have emphasis on transportation. Commissioner Holmes, we heard you and the other board members clearly about there should be another impact for the big box areas and the tractor-trailers, and the traffic should be more impact. Commissioner Clemmons, you mentioned it clearly on the District Two side, that the number of freight vehicles coming through, they should have more emphasis on not just the safety, but what they're doing to the roads, non-state roads, to get to the state roads. Stormwater fee study, again, it's been since two thousand and four. RFP's been developed to stormwater, get that out, and make sure, whether it's increased, decreased, maybe the same, are we doing the right things, are we spending the right money? Not only does the impact fee assure we're charging or have the right fees in place, but also assures we're doing the right things with the money we are spending, and kind of a third party to checks and balances. The big one's surplus property. If you look at our surplus property map you've seen on the wall in our conference room in there, there's little spots everywhere. We've actually, Stacey Pond went partial by partial. Now, all the, it looks like a bunch of land we own, and we own some stuff in the county, but there is only a small portion that is not tied to a different agreement. in the county, but there is only a small portion that is not tied to a different agreement. And we're going now by partial by partial, which is hundreds, or a hundred plus, and seeing is there a resolution? Because what that map shows is Henry County owns right-of-way also. If you look down Hampton Lucas Grove Road, it looks like we own a bunch of stuff, but all it is, future right-of-way, we bought right-of-way for future road improvements. But we do have some areas of concern that we do feel that there's been some, there's some opportunity, and some of the commissioners have pointed that out to us. We're now going back and Stacey's pulling all the old records to see, this land can be used for this, but when it's not used by the county, the county has to do this. So we're making sure we don't do anything that jeopardizes the resolution in the future, but that is definitely in process, but it is a long tedious process. Mr. Thomas, you mentioned our track, fleet tracking, that is on there for our fleet tracking. We're in the process of planning. We met with our fleet manager last week, right before the 4th, and discussed some preliminary vision, and they're looking on what we can do that's most beneficial for us. We're also looking at community building at Mosley Park, part of our impact fee to increase the footprint there for additional activities. I put in green, they start construction a week of July 22nd to get that in, and the village park. Our tennis court resurfacing is countywide, but it's also part of our capital. We get our capital process approved. Our tennis courts do need, all over the county, need to be resurfaced and redone. And the removal of the old admin building is complete. We are definitely hauling off portion now of that building, but that was definitely become a significant hazard in the community and a source, we got it removed. So...
And I did notice that we did have one item that wasn't listed. We have been working with, or the connecting Henry Department has been assigned as our point of contact for setting up our census complete county committee. As you all are aware, they have a collaboration group that meets monthly, and we actually had someone come down from the state to bring them up to speed on what those committees look like. I think I heard loud and clear from the board when we initially brought a resolution that the desire was not to hire someone to come in, but to look at the resources that we already have internally, to see how we could better utilize those resources. So Ms. Susan Crumley jumped on board and said, yes, I'll definitely work with our group to see how we can establish some groups to start that process. So I wanted to make sure that the board was aware of that as well. As you can see, there's a lot of things that are going on. I know that it's not everything. I know Commissioner Thomas, you have a whole nother list of things that you've had us working on, so that'll be in our next update. But these are the things that are, that have been hot on our platter for some time, and I think they've been asked a couple of times during the board meeting, so we wanted to make you all aware that not only are we hearing what you're saying, but we are working on it, and some things are just taking a little longer than what we expected. So at this time, myself and Brad will answer any questions that the board may have.
Okay, Commissioner Clemens, and we're going to Commissioner Holmes.
And don't forget that we need to add that we're still actively working on the Boys and Girls Club, and I know that wasn't on there, and we'll be able to bring everybody up to speed. We have a meeting August 5th with the school system about the Boys and Girls Club, still looking to see which one of the cities want to have a participation in that, to have the Boys and Girls Club in their community. It is coming. We are closer than we think, and we'll be able to update the entire board once we have the meeting with the school district on August 5th.
Okay, Commissioner Holmes.
Sorry, branding on the list. Can you guys go into more detail about that and let us know who's been involved in those meetings? Because I mean, if we're going to be talking about rebranding, each and every board member should have input on that.
Absolutely, and it is in the very preliminary stages. Our communications team has developed the RFP, and that certainly will include some interviews with our commissioners to be a part of that conversation, because you all are absolutely correct. We need to make sure that we certainly have the buy-in from the board when we start talking about rebranding the community, or rebranding the county.
Okay, and then my comments is still glad to see a lot going on with the comprehensive transportation improvement plan specifically on the transit plan. Glad to see that we're looking at a countywide fixed route, glad to see the trail. I will also say that as we continue those discussions, we really need to have some conversations about commuter rail. Because as I said on those ARC boards, right now, that rail is coming to Clayton County 2040, 2050, and Henry County is not included. So we'd need to make sure that we talk about transit, that we've got our footprint included in those discussions as well. So those are things we can talk more about as well. Okay? Commissioner Thomas.
If you would please keep us updated on your search for HR directors and assistant HR director, as well as, I think you're calling transportation director, I'm not sure the title, as well as our marketing and branding, whatever that title's going to be, director as well. Those three components are very important to the development and the branding of this county and where we're going. Without them in place, it's very hard to determine and make sure where we are in HR, where we are in transportation, and who we are. So if you will, please keep us updated, what you're doing with the consultants or the recruiter that's looking for these individuals, and make sure we have some type of information on the final candidates that are coming forth for them, so that we can have an opportunity to review them as well.
Absolutely. Okay, any other comments? I would like to say I'm glad to see that this was a great update. Look forward to more periodic updates, because this is good information to share. Okay? Anything else? That's it. Thank you. So we're now moving to the updates regarding our next Board of Commissioners meetings. On July 16th, we have a regular Board of Commissioners meeting, actually, these are the public hearings for the millage rate on July 16th at 9:00 a.m., and then there'll be another millage rate hearing on July 16th at 6:00 p.m. And then we'll have a Board of Commissioners meeting, regular Board of Commissioners meeting on July 16th at 6:30 p.m. And again, we just made the note of the call special meeting for SPOLOST on July the 24th. Did we have a time yet?
We don't have a time at this point, because I've got to get with Michelle, but I will definitely get that sent out to the board.
Okay, so we'll make a note on July 24th, there will be a special call meeting regarding the SPOLOST five, and time to be determined. On August the 1st, at 10:00 a.m., there will be a called Board of Commissioners meeting for, again, the public hearing and the adoption of the millage rate. And then on August 6th, at 9:00 a.m., there will be a regular Board of Commissioners meeting. So at this time, I look to the county attorney, do we have any items for the executive session?
We do have pending potential litigation, and I believe personnel matter.
Okay, so at this time, we'll...
I have on the calendar that July 24th is our millage rate vote. Did that change? I have a millage rate vote on the 24th, and I have monthly municipal and local government strategy meeting.
The millage rate vote is on August 1st. I think we initially had several dates that the tax commissioner was holding out, and I think we had a couple of commissioners that had conflicts, so we moved the 24th for the millage rate to August 1st. And it looks like the 24th, it's going to be an early meeting, because I do understand that some commissioners are going to be traveling south. So we'll probably have to do a 9:00 a.m. on the 24th regarding SPOLOST.
So the, well, we have the millage rate vote on the 24th, then that would change to the SPOLOST?
That's right. The millage rate vote will not be on the 24th, because we had commissioners that had conflicts for that, and so that will be on August 1st. And that should be on your calendars.
Okay. Okay. Any other questions regarding the upcoming meetings? Okay, regarding the executive session, we do have two, at least two areas of, that we will need to discuss in the executive session for a now call for a motion to adjourn to executive session.
So move.
We have a motion?
Second.
And a second. Any further discussion? All in favor? Okay, we will now adjourn for executive session. Stephanie, you ready? Okay, we are now called for a motion to reconvene from executive session. So move. We have a motion?
Second.
And a second. Any discussions? All in favor? Okay, we reconvene 5 to 0. So at this time, we'll call for the attorney for anything.
All you need is a motion for the resolution supportive executive session.
Okay, we now call for an approval of the affidavit pertaining to the executive session. So move. We have a motion?
Second.
And a second. Any further discussion? All in favor? Okay, and at this time, we're called for a motion to adjourn. So move. We have a motion?
Second.
And a second. Any discussion? All in favor? Okay, we are adjourned.